We're back in session. Toward the Stephen Moore Library in Mount Olive. County managers' comments.
Mr. Chairman, just a few things very quickly because I know it's been a long day. Wednesday, tomorrow night at 5:00, we'll continue our negotiations with the school board and the developer on the two middle schools. And representing the county will be the chairman, Commissioner Dougherty, Borden Parker, myself, and Pam Holt. So again, that'll be tomorrow night at 5:00. The gateway rate issue, we have a meeting tomorrow morning on that. This is for staff. So the issue that was brought up at the meeting, at the last meeting, about the new rate increases and the issue with the area agency on aging, I'll have all of those people to the table and we'll see if we can't get that resolved and get back with you on that. Wanted to briefly just go over the Duke Energy Letter. You all got a copy of that this morning. And that just talks about the plans they have and the schedule they have for making corrections on the coal ash issue. We also have a meeting this week with Wayne County Community College, have a meeting with the president and a couple of her folks. And we're going to be talking about the new advanced manufacturing center and where we might be able to put that. The study that was, that, not the study, yeah, it is. It's a study we're going to have Dewberry and Associates do. I'm going to be getting that off of Dead Center here shortly. We've reviewed it. Borden had a few comments. He wants to go over with their proposed agreements. And I'll be sending those to them this week. And then we'll sit down and negotiate that out with them and come back to you with that. So we'll be able to get that back on track very shortly. The last thing is the, just to remind everybody that the retreat, the budget retreat is on for next Tuesday, the 8th. And it's at Walnut Creek Country Club. And it'll be at 8:00 a.m. And I'm planning on pretty much an all-day affair there. You remember at 2:00, we're going to have our legislators coming in to talk about our legislative priorities, particularly with the NCACC. I think Steve had given us all that, plus it's on their website, about the major issues. The main thing we're going to emphasize there, of course, is the lottery funding. And we'll be presenting it not only from the standpoint of statewide, but also what's been the impact on Wayne County and how much money have we lost over the course of the years since that's been taken? And what the impact would be if they take the rest of it? Particularly in light of what we're just now negotiating out with the school board now as far as these two middle schools. So that'll be a part of it. Another part of it will be working on the profile and the advertisement for the selection of a prospective manager. And then the rest of it will be taken up with the budget retreat. And so we'll probably start off with the budget retreat part first because a large part of that, as y'all know, is what we really want to do is have you come in and talk about what are the major things you'd like to, the major initiatives or projects or whatever you'd like to see in next year's budget. And part of that will, in my view, leads into, well then, what are you looking for in your next manager as far as, particularly if you've got specific issues? One that easily comes to mind is if you're going to be building or doing a major renovation on a jail, then obviously you'd like to have somebody who has a lot of experience on public contracts and ideally has built either a jail or a police station or a sheriff's office or something along that line. So I think because of that, the, we should start off with the profile part. Then we'll get into the budget part. And we'll just stop at 2:00 wherever we're at. And because the legislators will be coming in at that point, so in the interest of their time, we'll, you know, move into the comments and discussion about our priorities for next year. And then we'll finish up with, with back on the budget retreat. So that's kind of a broad outline of what we plan on doing. And with that, that's, that's all my comments.
Mr. Chairman, question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood. Next Tuesday's going to be a busy day, and you've laid out that. Do you have a rough agenda now? Or will you have one before Friday that we could look at?
Well, it's basically those three things. I don't know that we're going to have much more of an agenda. It's just those three, those three items. As far as drilling down on details, I guess we'll, we'll get into that when we get there. I wasn't planning on sending out any attachments or anything because I'm going to go over them when we get there. I do plan on giving you some handouts on the budget, but I prefer to wait until we get there so I can go through them with you.
All right.
One, one thing that, on the, on the budget, and I guess I ought to mention that now, is one of the things I, I want to get some direction from you on is I have some ideas on changing the budget format. And I don't want to just do them and give that to you on May 20th. I want to go over some of that with you and just see if this is in line with what you want to see. So I'll be going over some of that on the format. And then several of you, comments I have heard is that you would like some more explanation of what each of the funds are for. And so I intend to do really just some background work on that and lay that out for you. And all of that will be in terms of talking about the format of the budget, what's covered by each fund and explanation of that. And, and then we'll go from there. Does that give you a little more background on it?
Yes, sir. You cover some areas that, yes, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay. We are, we will be talking about your two major sources of revenue, and that's the property tax and sales tax. I want to spend quite a bit of time on those with you, the calculation of those and what those mean going forward.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Wood?
If not, we'll move on to Board of Commissioners' committee reports and comments. Start on to my left today. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property values and sales tax receipts, as we know, is our lifeblood. Property values have to increase to watch your property tax rates. And of course, our sales tax receipts come in relation to our retail sales, as we all know. Economic development, as you also note, is, is that all of us's vision is that we grow economically. And with that, we have several items that I'd like to cover as far as times in Kinston on May the 9th at 9:30 at Lenore Community College, the 2014 Rural Round Tables. There's eight of them, and the one closest to us will be in Kinston, May the 9th at 9:30 a.m. We will be discussing at these round tables, how to increase our property values, businesses, small businesses, basically just how the, the future of eastern North Carolina, western Piedmont, and the whole state is, how's it going to shape just not the economic development venue, but also the Rural Center. These Rural Center programs have been adjusted, as we know, through the Rural Center and how they are funding and not funding. So all of this, the Rural Center has put these public meetings together to get a better, better feel of what we can do and what commissioners can do in making these decisions moving forward. Then along with that, the Association of County Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, has its April 10th district meeting. That will be in Onslow County, April, April the 10th. And that will begin at 5:30 in the evening. Program will be at 6:00, conclude at 8:00. I know that'll be a long day for us, but generally in the past, all commissioners have attended, attended these district meetings. And the other one is Friday, this past Friday, Strategic Public Leadership, which was offered throughout the state of North Carolina through the UNC government, School of Government there in Chapel Hill. I attended the Strategic Public Leadership Conference, the workshop there, from 9:30 until 3:00. We discussed quite a bit. Some of it was actually in, in how to, as leaders, as we all are, to, to manage our time, to be accountable for our time, but with that time, where do we spend it in economic development, in strategic ways of moving your county forward strategically in planning? That was the gist of the whole program that day, was how to strategically plan and work with inner government, your inner governance, because of all of the elected officials being leaders in their own, in their own way. How to get started, how to recognize vision or envision, how to enact, evaluate, and where to find the resources. So as we went through that process, they handed out what I've handed out to you today, creating their own futures. It's about 14-page information guide here, community vision in North Carolina local governments. I've handed that out to you. And hopefully, you will see by reading this how it will move into next Tuesday's meeting. Another reason why I wanted to ask Mr. Wood about the agenda is that some of what was passed on in Friday's meeting was in this material about the vision of moving forward. And I think we've got some issues with infrastructure, whether it be roads. We talked about natural gas. We talked about water. We talked about sewer. We talked about schools. So some of this information, as you'll see, Wilson County is the closest county that is closest to us, contiguous to the north. They've got a really good article of what Wilson County did. With that, if you, and to finish up, in the publication, County Lines, goes right back into page five, NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Economic Development Task Force, to host a two-day, two-day symposium. That will be April the 29th this month and the 30th. It's a $35 registration fee, and it will be at the Quorum Center in Raleigh. We've all been there through, for the association meetings. But again, this is a first-time event for the Economic Development Task Force. As, you know, I sit on, and we, we've put this together, our two-day forum, and we've got some great speakers. We certainly don't have to spend the night, so we don't have to spend that money. We can just drive up there and come back that night and go back the next morning if, you know, I think it would be best to hold back on those expenses. But that, it's all about economic development right now. It's about jobs. It's about finding ways to, to get the money to fund these, this vision that we would have for the county in moving forward, particularly in infrastructure. It's where the Rural, the Rural Center is on the radar, eastern region's been on the radar, and now NC East Alliance is on the radar. The task force is on the radar. So we, we've got a lot going on in eastern North Carolina trying to find the right fit for Wayne County will be and, and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that, 27th, 27th of March, I was, I attended a WCDA product development meeting. And of course, one of the big things that we looked at was, we identified existing buildings, industrial buildings for possible purchase and/or outfit. That includes county buildings as well as other possible buildings. Of course, we're, we're in the business here in Wayne County of creating jobs and making the highest use of older buildings that we have, existing buildings, trying to see whatever combination we can come up with to entice a business or industry to move into Wayne County. So that was a really good meeting. On the 28th, I attended the RPO meeting down in Mount Olive. And that RPO includes, covers deepland, green, Lenore, and Wayne Counties. And there was an update as far as from each DOT division in reference to the TIP projects, which is transportation improvement projects and also non-TIP projects. One of the things I learned at that meeting, and, and most of you probably know this, is that the North Carolina Board of Transportation recently signed off on an agreement with CSX that moves forward a feasibility study of restoring the abandoned rail line between Castle Hain and Wallace in Duplin County. Now, this was news that I didn't know, and that came out at our RPO meeting. On the 29th of March, I attended the Friends of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base Gala at, at Walnut Creek. And I just want to say just a couple of things. I want to read you the mission statement of the Friends of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. "The Friends of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base is a 501(c)(6) organization formed to promote, to promote the continued vitality and sustainability of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Its goal is to strengthen the relationship between Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, the City of Goldsboro, and Wayne County, to identify and reduce, and reduce community threats to the base and its, and its mission, and to form long-term strategic plans in order to ensure that Seymour Johnson Air Force Base continues to serve critical missions of the Air Force so as to encourage its long-term sustainability and strength." There was over 300 people attended at Walnut Creek this past Saturday night. And Major General Stephen Quast really delivered a, a great message. His message was this, is that it was positive, that we will continue to be a strong military, and we also still live in, in the, in the, in the best country in the world as far as freedom and individual rights. And he doesn't see any reason, and we shouldn't see any reason why, that the United States of America in the future should still be able to protect and promote freedom throughout the world. Just a reminder, the Fremont Daffodil Festival was changed from last Saturday to this coming Saturday, April 5th. In Fremont, it starts at 10:00. The embers always play there. It's always a great time. So I encourage everyone to come out to the Daffodil Festival in Fremont this Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dougherty?
Two quick things here. Mr. Pate, I enjoyed attending your Wayne Ag Committee meeting last week. I learned a great deal from that meeting. And you're doing a great job up there. And hopefully, we'll move that thing to a fast resolution that we can start actually building. The other thing I want to point out is that, of course, Friday, we, we did have another meeting with the schools. And we are on a path to finding a resolution and a compromise between this board and that board. And hopefully, within the next few weeks, we can, we can bring that, or the county manager can bring that to us. We're hoping to get these back online to where we can have these schools opening in our next, our next school year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Mr. Carmody?
Thanks, Chairman. First thing I'd like to do is just give a little personal thank you to our county, our interim county manager. I do appreciate the little emails and things that you send to us to give us your opinion of what the issues are. I really do appreciate that. And I, I can sense that you're working towards us getting all of our information solid at the same time, in the same way. And so we'll all be consistently aware of what's going on. I just want to, I appreciate that. I didn't have any personal committees that I had attend since we had our last meeting, but I did take a little bit of my time to make a few stops along the way in my district. And I, I'm pretty sure that one of the gentlemen that I spoke to will probably see us on TV. But one of his concerns was with roads. And he was talking about where, where 70 is going to go, or where the new 795 is going to go. He was talking about how the old 117 look. And I, so I'm, rather than me, and I will follow up on the appropriate highway folk, but the public just needs to know that we are concerned about how secondary roads look, where the pavement is breaking. We've had a cold winter, and the roads need some looking at, the shoulders of the roads. We recognize that there's trash along beside the roads. And I had one neighborhood to call me and gave me the intersection. I rolled past it and looked. And then I did the research and it found out that it was going to have to be a neighborhood project. And some of those things we'll call for neighborhood projects, but I employ and ask public agencies to make sure that they get the trash up where they're supposed to get it up, so the citizens go out and pick up that part that's really left over. So that's important. Also, and I say this out loud because we're heading towards budget time, there is a concern, and I share it, that we have enough safety officers on the road and in the neighborhoods to, to deter break-ins and those kinds of things. Now, I'm not picking on those counties west of us, and I won't call the names of those places. But we watch Channel 11, and we see what's on those. And I don't want that extreme of that kind of thing making its way to Wayne County and setting up shop in Wayne County. So I say to us sitting here on this board, I want us to be receptive to making sure that we have enough police and deputy protection out there so that our families are protected. There's nothing any more important to me than that. I, I find it worth interest that we, as a group, applaud our America, love it. We have the greatest nation on earth. We don't have any, to my knowledge, there's no other military anyplace in the stronger or more capable than the one we have, and we love that. We, the sound of freedom flying across southern Wayne County was a beautiful sound when those jets up there. I said, I know they at work. The one thing that I publicly ask the public to do is not to support the president because of a party, but support the president because he's President of the United States. And it sort of breaks my heart when I hear folk make comments like, the President or the Premier of Russia is somehow another better than our president. Our president is only no better than his citizens. And I just want everybody to focus on that. When I wake up in the morning, I'm considering and wanting and want to say a prayer for Barack Obama, that he and the Joint Chiefs of Staff make the right decisions, that we're not sitting back in the time of 1963 when the Cuban Missile Crisis was such one 10:31 morning. I thought, sure, in the 10th grade, we won't go make it out of that. My hair is just white enough to remember those days. And so I don't want anybody beating the war drum to do a lot of posturing to return us to that. I want us to say our prayers for our president and the Joint Chiefs of Staff, that they make the right decisions about where we're going. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Mr. Pate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Met with tourism last Wednesday, and I'll try to give you a quick lesson on this because of time. But I had mentioned to you before that the North Carolina State Championship Cornhole is going to be held, family, at the Family Wild on June the 27th. And actually, that's the amateur day, and the 28th is pros. I did not realize you had amateurs, pros, and cornhole, but you do. Something that's come up, an idea that they've come up with, the tourism, which I really like. And it's going to recognize Wayne County's poultry business. We have a huge poultry business, as you well know. And they're going to have events, and they're going to call it Beak Week. And it looks like it's going to happen around September 13th. I just thought that was a great idea. And I, yeah, obviously, I'm going to be supporting that since it's recognizing our agricultural community. The agriculture meeting we had last week, I want to thank staff for their involvement in that, and that was really helpful. Mr. Harret out there wrote us a nice article in the paper, so I won't go into a lot of detail. But I was really glad that we had Representative Jimmy Dixon and had Senator Davis to come. Senator Pate had to call back to Raleigh, and Representative Bell had a loss in his family, could not attend. But I really appreciate it. And this effort continues to move forward, and we got a lot of people who are working hard on that. Attended Old Waynesboro last night, talked about Pig in the Park. It's going to be April the 12th, $6 in advance, $8 a day at the event. Honeybee Day, August the 16th. I bet there'll be a lady named King there. And something they've also come up with, it's just all works so well for me, is they discussed putting together an agriculture museum at an Old Waynesboro. And I thought that was very appropriate because just think of all the old agriculture equipment we've got in this county that's probably sitting around in a lot of farmers' farm, um, barns. Of course, I told them, I said they were proud of that stuff, but maybe we can get some of them to donate that kind of thing to us. Had opportunity to meet with the Carl Best Group last night. And if you gentlemen remember, that, this is a group of leading farmers in the county who work, is both educating other farmers, and they advocate for the farmers in the county and educate them. Again, I just said that. But they also bring legislative issues to not only our state capital, but they go to Washington, DC. So last night, they were working on what they consider to be their hot topics. And their number one topic that they want to see happen in this county is they want that ag center. I didn't push them along, they did, they told me, go ahead. The second thing they want to talk, they want to talk to our legislators about is the funding for cooperative extension in North Carolina Department of Agriculture, because if you're going to have an ag center, you've got to have the money to staff it. And those were the two top things. There was a great deal of discussion about regulations, EPA and Clean Water Act that really impacts our farmers. And time didn't allow for me to go into detail of that today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Mr. Bell?
I guess the first thing I should do is ask Commissioner Mayor a question. No, I won't go there.
Yes, sir.
(laughing). I have one thing on the agenda, no, two things really. Mr. Carmody is a sort of a celebrity. I was at a function Saturday night, and he was honored by a whole host of colleges and universities about his trailblazing attitude. So I would like to congratulate him on that award he received Saturday night. About 10 or 12 different schools were there to recognize him. So I felt pretty good being in his presence. Second thing is that we have a meeting starting Wednesday, Mr. Woods, about the Wayne Correctional Center. Mr. Lassner is going to meet us out there and going to show you and the new sheriff around as a what, that building. That's on Thursday, the 3rd.
Thursday.
Mm-hmm. And Ms. Noel has some information that I asked her to come up if she don't mind, and I'll explain that.
Good afternoon. If you remember, back in December, we interviewed seven firms for the feasibility study for the jail and the detention center. We've narrowed it down to four firms, which are NHA Works, Brennan &amp; Associates, Ware Bonzel, and Mosley Architects. We're going to have them meet us at the Wayne Correctional Center on Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m. so they can tour the facility. And then they will come back on April the 15th and present to you their presentation that they presented to us back in December. And then we would ask that you make a decision on who we would award to.
Have a work session, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me. Probably, probably wouldn't need a work session scheduled.
Can we schedule that?
Mr. Wood? When do you want to do it?
April the 15th, which is your commissioner meeting. We would plan to do it in the afternoon if possible.
That's fine. Marshall, will you note that?
Mr. Chairman?
Could I inquire? We actually are not going to let that contract or, until actually we resolve the fact that it will be transferred. Am I correct?
Right.
That is correct.
And if you recall, you've got to also make one other decision, and that is, do you want to go design-build or design-bid?
Once we receive the deal.
Once we receive, yeah.
Any other questions from Ms. Wood?
Yeah, I just think it'd be a good thing that those architects are going to go out there Thursday so they can get a bird's eye view as to what the buildings, you know, is designed for now, and whether or not they can turn it into a jail, a suitable jail, I put it that way.
Any more questions?
Go ahead, Mr. Dougherty. I assume any of us could attend that event?
Yes, we have noticed the meeting.
You have noticed the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Mr. Bell?
That's it.
Thank you. I've got just a couple of things. Was busy all the weekend, but really didn't get anything accomplished, really. This past Friday night, I did attend the First Annual Cures for the Color Banquet at First Church that was hosted by Southeastern Medical Oncology, Dr. Atkins's group. And it was a roomful. There were several hundred people there. And you don't have to look far to see people doing a whole lot worse shape than we are. I was there as a survivor, but I'm so blessed that I've got very little to complain about compared to other people. And also, Saturday night, I did attend the Friends of Seymour fundraiser at Seymour Johnson. As Mr. Mayo said, it was quite impressive, the number of people that was there. And General Quast did do an outstanding job on his presentation. And I would really like to, I think Ben Seeger was he'd go-getter as far as lining everything up. He had a lot of help, but Ben was the MC also. But they raised quite a bit of money, somewhere a little in excess of $113,000 is what they've raised so far. And that will go to lobbying and whatever it takes to keep Seymour Johnson open. Mr. Mayo did touch on the Daffodil Festival that was rescheduled. I think that's all I have. Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, sir. We just took a trip to the library and went down 117, and that is my district, at least the east side. I'm sorry, west side. The east side's Mr. Cromartie's. But I noticed, along with all the other commissioners, and all of us were in the van, but we did not take a vote, Steve. But, you know, one at the time, we sort of looked at the trash that was on the side of the roads all the way down to about where the solid waste trucks will turn in. And I don't know, Mr. Wood, if you could maybe talk to solid waste and to talk to their contractors that are coming in with the trucks. It is excessive, and it is. I thought maybe Chairman Cromartie was just sort of tapping me on the shoulder, I was driving, and said, just look how bad it is. And then John said, yeah, just Commissioner Bell, and this is really, really bad. And everybody else sort of in the back talking. But I started really noticing how bad it was. It is the worst I've ever seen. I mean, and it looks like it is like a hurricane has been through there and just thrown trash on both sides of 117. And I know that's an enterprise, and I know that the landfill is down, and I know the grass is down right now. But I know that spring will be here, and we'll start getting some higher grass, and we'll start getting those cutters out there, those grass cutters, and that paper and all that cardboard and everything is just going to start flying, and it's going to look worse. But we do have an image in Wayne County, and we have some great curb appeal, and we're doing a lot of great, I know the municipalities are doing a good job. Goldsboro's trying to get up and get these interchanges. The DOT does a lot with the flowers and the spring flowers, but that trash along that road was as bad as I have ever, ever seen it. I just, I don't know what we can do.
I can talk to Tim Rogers about making sure that haulers have their loads secured and covered as they're coming in. That's really the best you can do on it. Most landfills will not accept the waste if it comes in uncovered. And that's the way you enforce that.
Well, I know that's an issue. Now let's talk about a solution. I never like to talk about an issue unless there's a solution. The solution, I think, is in the past, a lot of people would think that with DOT, or prisoners, or misdemeanors, or whatever, to get out there. And we had the roads adopt a highway program that was put together years ago, Mr. Parker. And you're very familiar with that. But a great idea, but there was action behind that idea. So I hope that we can find some action to get that cleaned up before it gets out of control.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bell.
I don't want to steal this sheriff's thunder, but he was talking to me the other day that he planned on sometime in the near future, maybe using some of the jail inmates to go out, those that can be on the outside, to do some of that cleanup. And another thing that we might consider, you know, a lot of people are looking for jobs. Now, we might be able to create some kind of little, put four or five people to work and get them out down the roads and, you know, clean up. With the proper supervision, you know, we probably could do that, you know.
Mr. Pate.
I mentioned this last year when I took my trip to Georgia to visit my daughter. A preventive measure, I think, and I've noticed it when I was driving through South Carolina and Georgia, and I'm trying to remember exactly how much the fine was, but I would say it was like $1,200 or up to $2,000 full litering. What is it, still $200 here or is it $500? Anyway, a person would think twice, I believe, if they knew it was going to cost them $1,000 bucks throwing something out the window. And I know that's not exactly what we're talking about here. But I live in Wayne, more driving, people throw all kinds of trash in my yard on a regular basis. And they wouldn't do that kind of thing. So maybe we need to be talking to our legislators to change the law a little bit, increase those fines, and I tell you, it'll clean the road up.
I was, excuse me.
Mr. Bell, go ahead.
I was telling Commissioner King, when I was in Germany, and this is a fact, you could drive down a highway like that, and you would not see one piece of trash on the highway. And they didn't pay nobody, they didn't have no fines or nothing. They just don't do it.
One of the secrets to it, you know, like Mr. Pate said, if you increase the fines, but the secret is going to be catching two or three and let the word get out how much the fine is. I mean, just increase the fine if you don't act on it and enforce it. And I'm not saying that certainly law enforcement don't enforce it, I don't mean to imply that. But if you catch two or three of them and hit them with that $1,200, $1,500 fine, and make them pay it, we certainly don't lock them up because we don't have room for them. But the secret of it is making them, someone pay that fine.
I think we tried that once before, and Mr. Parker can verify this, getting people in court and getting a judge to, without actual proof or somebody seeing them throw it out. I mean, you know, that's a lot of paper out there on the floor. And one person didn't do it all, a lot of people did it. But trying to get a conviction in court is hard to do, really. Wouldn't you say that, Mr. Parker?
Right, then need somebody who's actually saw somebody throw it out, and then have to identify who it was.
Right.
All right, I'm not going to come right out and ask the general public for any assistance, but smartphones are great tools in some cases. If you see someone throw something out, if you can get a picture of it, and if you can get a license tag number, that might be a great help. Anyone else? I think we need to go back to closed session for a little while.
Of course, we could use the county commissioners as managers out there to watch these.
We're already working cheap enough.
To consult with an attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Do we need a motion? I saw a motion.
Motion for it would go in closed session. The motion carries now.